All right, thank you. We will call for order. The February twenty-two regular town council meeting, having done the location of the meeting since the beginning of the meeting, let's move to item one C, the law.
Mayor Foley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Alwater?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Let the record show all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Altieri.
Right, we have a forum. Is there a motion, I'm sorry, are there any comments or requests to reorder the agenda, re-guide us on the agenda, or any emergency additions to the agenda? There being none, is there a motion to approve?
So, a second.
All taken.
Aye.
All right, so we have the agenda. Item three, presentations and proclamations. Item three A, the Older Americans Nutrition Program proclamation. We have some representatives who are here. Would you like to approach and just give a brief introduction about the great work that we do?
Good morning, and thank you for having us. For this proclamation, I'm Emily Stone, I'm a retired girl in senior services at Senior Resource Association, and with me I have Liz Brunner, our VP of philanthropy, and Damaris Douglo, our Meals on Wheels manager. And I have a speech after the proclamation is read.
That's great, thank you. Apologize, we have to remember to turn on our buttons and turn them off. So we have a proclamation of the town of Indian River Shores proclaiming March twenty-four as a month celebrating Older Americans Act Nutrition Program. We have a whole bunch of where-ases, so I'm going to summarize just the good stuff and the meat. So going back to nineteen seventy-two, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act to include a national nutrition program for individuals sixty years and older. I think that's applicable to all of us up here with the exception of maybe Pete, so this is probably an issue that's near and dear to us. So for over fifty years, the law has helped community fund, to fund community-based organizations such as yourself. I guess we know it as Meals on Wheels, is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
So personally, from, you know, family, friends, and relatives, I know how important this is for older Americans to get proper nutrition and balanced meals, and it's also peace of mind for the family members to know that their loved ones and neighbors and family members are being properly cared for. We, you know, we have a great respect for everything that your organization has done. It certainly has an impact in every community regardless of affluence or lack of affluence, so it's really a broad community-based program that I think we can, you know, we can all get behind. So the therefore, which is the meat of the proclamation states, I Brian Foley is mayor of the town of Indian River Shores, do hereby proclaim March twenty-four, March twenty-two forty-four as a month celebrating the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, and urge every community member to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the national celebration can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. So congratulations to you and your organization, and we greatly appreciate everything you do. Does anybody else on council want to say anything on this?
Mr. Mayor, I have a, Judy and I have very good friends, Peter and Karen Pierce, who have actively participated in the Meals on Wheels program for many, many years now. And the times that we've been together with Peter and Karen, I can tell you that the testimonies they've given about their experience with the program, not only with regard to delivering the food, but addressing one of the components of the proclamation, which is isolation, that comes out profoundly in their testimonial about their participation. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And behalf of our CEO, Karen Deagle, who's also a resident of town of the Indian River Shores, I want to thank you for this proclamation. This year, we're celebrating our fiftieth anniversary at Senior Resource Association and our Meals on Wheels program, which is dedicated to promoting the health and well-being of seniors in Indian River County. March is an important time for senior resource, as we join thousands of Meals on Wheels programs across America, raising awareness of senior hunger and isolation. With one in four Americans aged sixty and over, our senior population is growing rapidly. Now more than ever, Meals on Wheels serves as a lifeline to countless older adults in our community. In twenty twenty-three, SRA provided more than a hundred and six thousand meals to hungry and homebound seniors in Indian River County. Today in our community, there are still about three hundred and fifty seniors on the waitlist waiting to receive meals. Our home delivery program helps alleviate hunger by providing a hot nutritious meal, delivered by SRA staff and our dedicated volunteers, to clients five days each week with two frozen meals provided for the weekend. All menus are planned by a registered dietitian to ensure that they contain one-third of their daily nutritional value. But this program is more than just delivering a hot meal. It is also a daily wellness check, and it provides our seniors and their families with a sense of security that allows them to live a more healthy and independent lives in their own home. Sadly for too many seniors, the visit is the only social interaction they experience until the volunteer arrives the next day. Providing more than four hundred and fifty meals each day, we could not accomplish this without the dedication and time and effort of more than two hundred devoted volunteers. We need to ensure this critical program can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And you all can help. On March fifth, sixth, and seventh, we are hosting March for Meals, which is a wonderful opportunity for public leaders and members of our community like you to experience the gratification of delivering a nutritious meal to homebound seniors. You could even join Karen Pierce on her route. Many of you have participated in the past, and I'm hoping you will join us to visit a few of our seniors who would love to meet a special guest like you. Thank you again for the proclamation and for allowing us a few minutes to help raise awareness of the Meals on Wheels program and the needs for the ever-growing senior community.
Thank you very much. No, no, please, I was gonna ask if you want to, for your newsletter, come up and... You're very welcome. And just one question as you're leaving, so for the March five, six, and seven, let's call it a ride-along, for lack of a better word, is there a mechanism for us to learn and sign up for those of us who want to go?
Absolutely.
Okay. Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Emily, just one question?
Yes.
Your waitlist question, your waitlist, is that getting smaller or larger?
So, on average, we see around ten individuals being added to the waitlist. Tell us when we are ready. Are very fortunate in our community right now. We are providing meals to individuals who are waiting for the bulk of funds. And at this point, we're serving over two hundred individuals that are on that waitlist of the three hundred and fifty, and we're hoping to eventually serve all of them that are waiting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. Moving on to item three B, Sector Four update, that's Town Manager Harpering, again, this has to do with the critical beach erosion designation for the Sector Four, which is the sector that is predominantly the town's sector of eroded beach. So, Mr. Harpering?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, excuse me. I'm gonna run through a number of slides and information. It's a fairly large slide deck. I just want to note to everyone that we'll, go ahead and email this, a link to this out Friday on our regular newsletter, but we'll also have a link to it on the, on the, on the town website, again, just in the interest of time because of the number of slides. So Hurricane Nicole made landfall on November tenth, twenty twenty-two. It was the first hurricane to strike the U.S. in November in almost forty years. Landfall was in Hutchinson Island. Note that due to the long-duration wind and wave event and the scope of the impacts, much of the worst damage happened across a scope of over a hundred miles from landfall, and you may recall, some of the worst damage was actually in, along Daytona Beach and south of there. So Indian River Shores did sustain substantial damage in the form of significant and widespread dune erosion. One of the biggest things that I again would note was that this was such a long-term wind and wave duration event. So, some photos in November twenty twenty-two, immediately after Hurricane Nicole, that's the five hundred building in Johns Island, that's a residence just right across the street over here on the beach, and some of these you've seen before, but this is what happened, you know, to our town and to the, and to Sector Four in particular, immediately after the storm. Many of the dune crossovers and structures along the dune line in the town were severely damaged or completely destroyed. That's actually the dune crossover at our public beach access, at Beachcomber. If nothing else, it's a testament to the construction of that piece of it.
[laughing]
And it's really incredible what you saw down there, and I know many of you, all of you, you know, took opportunities to get down to the beach. So again, here's just some, some photos, and this was immediately after Nicole in twenty twenty-two. So there was a rush to repair the damage, and it led to substantial amount of unpermitted work being conducted. We talked about this at, at council meetings past. You see some of these photos, you can see the, the newer, some of the newer work. Again, a lot of that was, was unpermitted, and this was addressed in a team effort by Public Works, Code Enforcement, Public Safety, and the Building Department. And I know we have Sergeant Mike Krantz, our code enforcement officer, Public Safety Sergeant here. He spent a lot of time down on the beach, and we'll see some of the, the product of his work as well. What we did was, we went ahead and took the initiative and marked off structures that we determined to be unsafe. This included inspections by Sergeant Mike Krantz, our building officials, and, and our Public Works Director. So we can go ahead and post them, you know, indicates an unsafe structure. And we, even to this day, just based on the, you know, weather systems, we continue to, excuse me, we continue to monitor and document everything that's taking place, you know, with weather events that are likely to lead to erosion. So critically eroded shoreline. I just want to note, this is very important, because as, as council knows, we've submitted our own application for this particular designation with DEP. We have, we've had a number of meetings already. We have another meeting next Friday, the twenty-ninth, with DEP personnel and our personnel on this, including our coastal engineer. This is gonna be a very critical piece, I, I think, in terms of a determination, because the Florida Administrative Code, basically, I'll try to sum it up, says that an area of shoreline can be determined to be critically eroded if adjacent portions are critically eroded, even though this particular portion has not been designated as such. That's exactly what we have for Sector Four. If there's a case where we have an administrative rule which is directly on point, I, I think this one is it. And this is the, you know, the gap portion of it, you know, in terms of between identified critically eroded areas. So that's, that's one thing that we're pushing very hard on. So Sector Four is the only beach sector in the county not designated as critically eroded. And this, again, I know everyone has seen this before, but that little highlighted area is, is Sector Four along the coast. FDEP, that's the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, they're the agency which issues this designation. We're, as I noted, we're currently in the process of having an independent request. County did submit a request independently of us, but we followed up with that as well. We've retained independent consultants for the purpose of submitting that request. And the importance of this designation is, doesn't really have anything to do with the dune restoration project. And I'll get to the dune restoration project in a second, which is, which is ongoing and planned. But this designation really allows us to look for, or I should put it this way, really allows the town to encourage the county to look for additional funding areas because of the designation of critically eroded, both within the state and within the federal government to include FEMA. It's also an important stepping stone if we were to look at engineered beaches, which I'll, I'll touch on in just a second, which would be a second, a second step from just doing straight-term dune restoration. So we talked about the long-term goal of an engineered beach. There are a variety of different things that that could entail, and I don't want to go into the technical aspects of that. But again, it's both an operational benefit in terms of what can be done with the beaches, both, both the hard-packed land and the dune system, as well as opening up a state and federal funding in that regard. So, again, this will be attached, but we had county update with the dune project in Sector Four. Basically, they're essentially good to go with permitting, funding. The issue now is timing associated with the turtle nesting season. So we do anticipate, and I know that, and councilmembers said, please chime in if you like, but we anticipate a start date in twenty twenty-four, but at the end of turtle nesting season, at sometime after eleven-one. So that's kind of what we anticipate for the dune project in Sector Four. Again, the permitting is ongoing, but there was an archaeological issue, but I think this is probably going to be overcome, and I, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but famous last words, but I'll say, don't hold me to it, but I think we're in good shape based on all the representations that we've gotten from the county and the communications that they've had, so I just don't think it's gonna be an issue. As I said, ideally, the project's gonna be ready to proceed at the close of turtle nesting season in November twenty twenty-four. Just for a highlight, twenty twenty-three in December, we had some long-range, long-term, or excuse me, some, some long-duration weather events. So again, this is Beachcomber. Keep in mind that at Beachcomber, the town added our own sand at our beach access right here, so we could continue to facilitate Public Works and Public Safety access to the beach. And this is some of the erosion you can see from when we, you know, placed the sand down. So this is December twenty twenty-three, just barely a couple of months ago. And these were all taken on twelve fifteen, twelve seventeen. And as you know, you'd see, you know, some of those cutoffs that just, again, keeps progressing. So this was December nineteenth. You know, again, we're seeing even substantial changes over a period of days, given the nature of the storms and events. And of course, the beauty of our community belies the, you know, belies the underlying danger of the erosion.
Should we have updated the FDEP submissions to take account of the post-December twenty twenty-three?
Yes, not from a engineering standpoint, because we don't have that data. In other words, the county hasn't, hasn't done that, hasn't issued their own. However, we continue to monitor that and document photographically and through our people on the beach. So we're giving them everything that we have. I don't want to say almost weekly, because I don't want to bother them, but every time we get down there, we have an event, and we take additional pictures, as with these, they go directly to the, directly to the beach and shore people at DEP through our, you know, through our consultants. And again, I, you know, offer, of course, to the council members, we can, you know, take you on a run on the side-by-side along the beach at, at your convenience. I know that Councilmember Smith has availed herself of that opportunity on a couple of occasions. That's Delmar there. And one of the, you know, hazards that we see are just, you know, these older posts and things from different walkovers that are getting exposed. So this again is after our sand replenishment on December twenty-first. As you know, we've been maintaining a reserve of sand in order to keep our beach access open. So after that erosion, on the twenty-first, we went ahead and, and put that sand up so we could get back on, on track. And then, this is January twelfth. Again, we're seeing some considerable, you know, additional erosion. If you note, you can't see the cursor, but up in this area, there've been some additional plantings, and plantings, and you can see in some areas where people have done some plantings, and the erosion's almost back up to the planting Again, just to representation, and we're almost, you know, we're almost to date here. So here's February seventh. Again, additional large cuts in erosion, and we know that there were no named storms or major events. These were just, you know, two days of twenty-five mile-an-hour winds out of the north with, you know, with some big high tide hitting. This is just to the south of Beachcomber. So if you go down the Beachcomber access. And that's actually our access, and we, and, and so this is our Beachcomber access here, and you can see just from when we put down some of our reserve sand until February seventh in that timeframe. We've also seen a lot of the exposed, exposed bladders, and then, you know, again, February eighth, you can see just all the substantial damage. We closed down our beach access. We did our replenishment to reopen it on the twelfth, again. So that was, you know, twice in the last two months. We still have some reserve sand, you know, pending any additional issues and, and turtle nesting season, of course. Public beach access sign that we're, we're getting, oops, sorry about that. So that's where we are in the Sector Four update. I'm happy to answer any questions in, in that regard. Again, I should have some more information for council individually after our meeting next week with, with DEP.
Just one comment. I just want to make sure that the residents, and I know Mike's here, is that you can see the, the two times recently that we put the sand down, and then everyone in Sector Four is expecting to have their dunes restored. And I'm just hoping that their expectations are not too much, that they don't realize that within a day or two, it could go back to this. So, nobody should fool themselves that this is a permanent fix, and that's why we want the critically eroded designation, right? Okay.
Question. If, if an individual constituent whose beachfront has an erosion event, let's say an erosion event following Nicole, files an emergency application and then files a claim for reimbursement, then this happens, December and January storms happen. True really aren't storms, it's just a normal wear and tear from beach events. Do they have the standing to then file a seriatum, second application for permitting and reimbursement for particularly, say, sand re-nourishment?
I don't have an accurate answer for you as we sit here, but I'll, I'll get one for you. I, I don't know what the internal process is for that reimbursement, if they can do subsequent, you know, concurrent applications based on events.
Thanks, Jim. I just want to say that we asked for you to put together in one place a comprehensive overview of what we've done and what we're doing, and this fits the bill perfectly. And I, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I want to, I just want to say that I think, thanks to people on the stais in this council, we finally have gotten ourselves moving in the direction of really getting behind this, and necessity obviously is the mother of invention, but thank you to the other council people who have really made this an issue. And I know, I know the two sitting to the, to the left of me and the two sitting to the right of me have been instrumental in that. So the people of our town should be thankful that we're not just reacting to something, we're now putting together a comprehensive way of proceeding for critically eroded designation. And I think this also lays the foundation for remediation in the event that this does happen again, because to Councilmember Smith's point, we've, we've seen this before, and we can go through all of this, and, and, you know, one bad event, then the next thing you know, we have it. The bladders, I think, are back from two thousand and four, right? And that was when we thought we had done a, a really bang-up job of preventing a very serious event from ever doing this. So, you know, what's that old commercial, you know, it never pays to fool Mother Nature? Well, it never, it never pays to fool ourselves about the, the impact of Mother Nature. The second point, and maybe you can speak to this, Jim, is that I often get questions like, well, why can't we just have pickup trucks come and dump sand on the beaches? And, you know, it doesn't seem like that big a deal to me. Well, we up here know that you can't just dump sand, it's gotta be approved sand. There's a, a limit to how much that is, and you can't just always dump heavy machinery and equipment on the beach. So would you like to just speak to that, so we have a definitive explanation of that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. That's an excellent point, because the challenges don't have to do with willingness, because the county is willing, certainly we are willing. There are, on, on your point, there's a finite amount of time that this can happen in, because of turtle nesting season. So we have a very limited number of months that anybody can perform any operations if they saw it. The issue with the sand itself and acquiring the sand, excuse me, is a great challenge, because we've seen scenarios in the past, recently, where the small number of sand mines that are proximate to the location that the sand has to go to have said, sorry, private vendors or private people, we're reserving this for the county. We, you know, we don't, we don't have any sand for you right now, because we reserved it all for the county. And there are really only two limited types of approved sand that you can get down onto the beach. So you have the type of sand that is very, you know, very monitored by DEP, and you have the availability of that. And then the secondary factors associated with this just simply have to do with the operational piece. One is just being able to get the dump trucks to get the sand and, and get it to the beach. And then secondly, have the equipment that allows the, the placement and the maintenance of that sand in the appropriate spot. And, Mr. Mayor, as you alluded to, it's not just trucks running down the beach and dumping sand. There are engineering plans for every foot of the dune and where the sand goes. So it is a, it is a challenge, and, and, and I think a point well taken.
If I could make, make a quick comment as, as well. And Councilman Smith, who goes to South Jersey Shore like I did when I lived in Philadelphia, we were all used to having the offshore dredges pumping sand onto the beach. That is very difficult to do down here, because there is a reef offshore, and DEP is very cognizant of the marine life. I don't, of those of you who were here when we had the red tide and when all the marine life came up on the beach, I remember being absolutely astonished how many sea snakes came up and other types of fish. They were all existing there offshore. So it's, you know, it's not like Jersey where you can just pump the thing in, it'd be a heck of a lot easier. So I know that gets people frustrated, and I felt that way when I first came here until, you know, I was told about all these different additional regulations versus New Jersey. Hard to believe that Florida can be more difficult in some things than New Jersey, but I guess that happens, so.
No, an excellent point, and you don't even have to go that far south, because off Fort Lauderdale, there's, you know, there's the ability to dredge and pump. But, you know, again, different topography, it's an excellent point. Vice Mayor Carroll?
Yeah. I was just going to point out, or ask, in the last week or so, I've had half a dozen people ask me about, coincidentally, offshore dredging. And is the reef the reason that offshore dredging is, is it against the law to, to, to have that practice here?
I don't want to say it's, it's against the law per se, but the regulatory pieces and the policy decisions by the county and the state relative to what's right offshore, and then having a policy decision that says, we choose not to do that because of these particular static items, i.e., you know, the offshore reefs here. So it's not that it couldn't, certainly, from an engineering standpoint, could easily be done, but I think there is great reticence in the easily be done, but I think there is great reticence in the permitting piece because the county has already taken a stance that says that, uh, much like their position on, um, on groynes, seawalls, um, uh, you know, other types of coastal armoring, they just say our policy is against it. We just don't want to do it.
And one other, one other comment to that, I think it also has to do with the distance of where the pipes come from. I know that in Stone Harbor, they had like seven miles of pipes in order to do the beach. It was a pretty big deal. The pipes will come apart, but I think here it's even further up the coast if they were able to dredge. Is that right, Pete? Is that what you're nodding your head?
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, the, the closest location that I can think of that offshore dredging, uh, occurs is the Fort Pierce inlet. Um, and I'm personally familiar with it and, but to your point, and that's why I wanted to mention it, the Army Corps of Engineers is the primary agency and they're doing it for navigability of the inlet. And they're literally pulling it out of the inlet, coming across the jetty and pumping it onto the beach. Uh, might be a hundred yards. So there are many factors, including back to, as Mr. Harvings said, turtle nesting season. You would be able to pump sand onto the beach between our turtle nesting time period anyway, which then defaults you into essentially the winter time, which is, as we know, more difficult seas offshore, higher. So you'd have to have dredges placed. There's just a lot more components, but to your point, the distance, yes, that absolutely is a factor. And, and I know, uh, Fort Pierce also had to dredge the intercoastal channel by its marina to the south and to run pipes all the way back through the intercoastal to come back to the inlet and essentially come there with several miles. And it was millions of dollars in being able to do that for a one-time dredging. Um, I don't know all the specifics, but it is available, but as a process, it's far more arduous than, uh, what I've seen otherwise, so.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Um, all right, well, uh, the good news is you get an A-plus on this report. The bad news is, uh, I think, I think, uh, there's some sobering news in it in terms of, uh, managing expectations. As Councilmember Smith pointed out, that's part of our, our public outreach, uh, job as a council and, uh, also, uh, explaining why this can't be done immediately. We have to wait until, um, 2024, um, 2025 to really, really see the benefit of this. And that's, uh, a couple of prayers, you know, to give us a break from the winds and the storms wouldn't, wouldn't be ill placed either. So thank you very much for that and, uh, um, we'll look forward to updates on the report as, as required. And to Councilman Altieri's point, um, I think we need to continue documenting this with, um, uh, video and, and photographic evidence, you know, just to, I understand it's not part of the formal submissions, but, you know, as anecdotal evidence of what's going on, it's very helpful for us to, to be able to, um, present that at the appropriate point in time. All right, terrific. So we'll move on to item four, which is, uh, comments from the public regarding the agenda. Are there any comments regarding the agenda? All right. Uh, there being none, we will move on to the consent agenda. I see under item G, uh, there is a resolution which is an item that requires a roll call vote. So we will have a roll call vote for the entire consent agenda if there is a motion to approve and no discussion.
So move, second.
All right, roll call vote.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Let the record show the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item six, which is the mayor's report. Uh, I will keep it brief today, um, have only one item. We, we covered most of the items that I usually cover in this report. Um, the one item I do want to highlight is that, um, I met with, uh, the new director of the Children's Services Advisory Committee. Uh, for those of us on council, um, who were, uh, participants in the request for a special taxing district, uh, we learned an awful lot about CSAC as it's known. And, uh, I will say as a way of background that, uh, rounding up, we're about 3% of the county population, but we generate about 20% of the ad valorem revenue for the county. So it's 2.7%, 18-point something percent. So if you round up, you round up. Uh, so I think we all have, um, an interest in knowing where our taxpayers' money is going. Uh, there have been, um, some concerns, I'm sure by members of this council and by members of the public, uh, just where all this money goes. And in particular, uh, if you remember, you know, back when we took up this issue in a formal vote, uh, some time ago, um, just the structure of this organization and, and how accountable is it, how transparent is it, it is. Uh, so in terms of following up on that, um, I had what I would describe as a productive meeting. And I was, um, happy to say here that, I'm happy to say here rather, that, uh, I had fairly low expectations for, you know, any results of the meetings, but, um, uh, I am moderately encouraged that, um, new administrative attention from the county, um, has the potential for some change, but we all have to have a role in that. And the role we have to have in that is to voice our concerns, uh, among which are, uh, and I'll speak for myself here, um, just, just how, how accountable are these recipients of grant funds, of substantial tax dollars that they get? We always see a needs assessment. That's their big thing, a needs assessment. We, we need the money to solve this problem. We need the money to solve that problem. If only we have more money, we can, we can have greater impact. Well, that sounds too typically government to me. Give us more money. We're not going to tell you what we did with it in the past and how effective it was, but we're, we're, if we only have more money, we can do more. The selection criteria, you know, how can you have selection criteria if you really don't have comprehensive, uh, review of what these grant recipients have gotten? And then that brings us to the question, which I think is a real systemic flaw, and that is, it's self-reported.
Yes.
How many grant recipients have you ever met who got money and said, sorry, we got to do a better job, we wasted it, but we'd like you to continue to fund us? Everything is always hunky-dory, or, uh, if there is, if there is a self-assessment that, um, that's readable, uh, the self-assessment tends to be, um, so general that you really can't tell what they did or what they didn't do. No metrics, so, um, I'm, I'm pleased that CSAC, at least according to their own information, says that 99.1% of the funds generated through the tax go towards the programs. So only 0.9% is administrative? Well, that's, that's pretty good. That's effective, but that's only really half of the equation. The other half of the equation is, you know, what's the money being spent on? Uh, are we just making ourselves feel better by giving money to organizations that are hiring staff, uh, that have really, really very little impact in the community at large? And, and just to be clear, in my opinion, there are some wonderful aspirations and goals for what CSAC does. Uh, so, um, there is a new, uh, a new person in town. I don't want to say sheriff because the sheriff is actually on the CSAC advisory committee, but there is a, uh, a new administrator, uh, who, uh, I was pleased to find out is working very carefully with, as I said, heightened attention from, uh, county administration that, um, that understands, I think, the structural challenges and the need to really have more accountability and, um, and how important it is really to get not just elected officials who pay attention to this stuff, but really the public at large behind it and to understand that the goal is really to, to help, um, not the grant recipients, but the people the grant recipients are supposed to help. Um, so that's a very, very brief explanation of, um, of the meeting. Um, I was provided with, uh, a document which I will, uh, leave with my materials that some council members may have gotten already, some may not. And I think you can see that there are some structural changes here that I, as I said, have me cautiously optimistic that we're going in the right direction. But I think this isn't one of those things that, you know, we just put it on autopilot and say, okay, well, you know, some changes have been made. We have to stay on top of it. Uh, we owe it to our taxpayers, uh, and we owe it as, as residents of the community. So, um, uh, with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent I can on this. And as I said, I will leave the, um, the CSAC, um, uh, structural change document summary that, that I was presented at the meeting. Uh, I'm, I'm personally going to continue to, um, well, be a pain in the neck. Sometimes that's our job is to be a pain in the neck and, uh, and ask what's going on. And I would say that, uh, any council person that wants to schedule a meeting, I think that there's openness to that. And, um, uh, they're are, they're meeting more frequently. So used to, used to meet four times a year for two hours to, and I'm looking at Bob because I know, you know, we have these comments in, uh, in a public setting, as did, uh, Sam. Uh, I mean, to meet eight hours a year to decide who gets this amount of money? Uh, come on, we're all, we're all on boards and, and foundations and we know that, uh, I call them coffee and donuts meetings. You know, you go, you have coffee, donuts, you listen to a presentation, then you leave. So, uh, you know, while, while increased meetings that have no productive purpose are useless too, uh, I believe there's a really good chance that this, this could be more beneficial. So with that, I see Councilman Alwater wants to have a comment, so.
Your comments are, are spot on. I did attend a recent CSAC, um, meeting and what I, what I found interesting, I didn't comment during the meeting, was they, they talked about trying to check to see what those organizations were doing because they really didn't come and visit, but they scheduled a visit with them. I, and I said to the director, I believe her name is Cindy Emerson, is that who you spoke with?
Yes.
Uh, I, I said, what is the point of that? You got to show up unannounced. Uh, that doesn't make any, any sense at all. And they have a very odd organizational structure in that they have actually two committees. They have the primary CSAC committee, then they have this other committee, which actually, I think, has all the power and does all the work because they're the ones that listen to the presentations and they bring it out back for what essentially I think is a, essentially an up or down vote. You know, and I, I said, Ms. Emerson, I said, if I was on CSAC, I'd want to be on the other committee where you can find out what's going on and ask hard, pointed questions. So I, and she said, she said, well, I don't want to put words in her mouth, other than that, she said, well, that's the way it's structured by the, uh, resolution or ordinance from county commission. If I was on county commission, I'd change that in a, in an instant because you have these other people who are in that industry and I'm sure are good people, but, you know, it's like your comments regarding the self-reporting, you always give yourself a, a, a good score. So I, 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 I think the whole structure is fundamentally flawed.
Thank you.
Uh, question. Do I recall correctly that as a result of, of, um, the town of Indian River Shores and the, and Orchid, uh, not going along with the proposal, that the county did in fact increase the funding from an eighth of a mil to a quarter of a mil?
Uh, I believe that's, that's correct. I, I'm not sure the, uh, the quarter mil was immediate. It may have been phased in, but that's my recollection as well. And, uh, Vice Mayor Carroll makes an excellent point. Um, you know, rather than just sign off on a special taxing district, um, you know, this council took a deep dive into this and said, wait a minute, we're creating a special tax for 10 years that's going to generate, I forget, but it was
Hundred.
Well over a hundred million, I think by the time you've, that was, it was a hundred million not adjusted for increases in, in property values
Right.
Since it's an ad valorem tax. And, um, there was, again, there was, they were, they were going to model it after CSAC, um, which, you know, was somewhat bizarre, I think, for us to swallow the fact that, well, we're going to create a special taxing district to generate more revenue because the current system's broken and we're going to model it on the system that's broken, um, which was one of the reasons, major reason for my no vote. So you're, you're absolutely right. Um, and I think it was our hope, Vice Mayor Carroll, that, uh, by making the county commissioners more responsible for, uh, the increased funding in this, that there would be, you know, greater oversight and, um, um, you know, I, I just don't think we've, we've seen that up to this point. Uh, as I said, I am, uh, cautiously optimistic that the awareness of, you know, the, the structural flaws in this have been, um, identified. But, you know, staff people need support and they need political support. And, uh, uh, I tried to make the point that, you know, my being a pain in the neck and anybody else's being a pain in the neck really was intended to help, you know, those on the inside that wanted to make the structural changes and, and implement them. So, um, I don't know if that makes it clearer or less clear, but that's, that's really the message here is, you know, let's, let's individually take a look at this and, um, encourage the changes that need to be made structurally because that's the only way I think we're going to see some meaningful change here. And, you know, right down to the point of, you know, maybe, maybe the county commission should have, uh, thought about in the ordinance, uh, some implementing regulations or as part of the, or, part of the ordinance, you know, requiring and, and budgeting for an independent, uh, audit and independent assessment of, you know, each of the grant recipients on an annual basis. Um, so, um, you know, I know that, uh, I know that creates more work and, um, it also creates some other issues for, um, the recipients of these grants who've gotten used to just getting funded year after year after year. But what are we doing here? I mean, are we, are we really trying to have a positive outcome, um, for the less fortunate in the community and, you know, particularly the children? Or are we, again, are we just trying to make ourselves feel better by saying, well, we spent 10% more money this year than we did last year, so don't say we're not doing anything? All right? So, um, yes, Councilmember Smith.
When we talked about the children's tax, you know, a few years ago, there was, there were people that were pushing for that and those people were supposedly going to be more impactful on CSAC. And I missed the beginning of your talk, I'm sorry, but it, it doesn't appear.
You didn't miss anything, I promise you. It was just the intro, so.
Yeah, so what they were saying then, they said they would do that now, and it's not happened.
I, I think that's, in, in my opinion, that's a correct assessment, but
Okay, well then.
But I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that if empowered properly, the, the people that are, uh, at least given administrative charge of this now on the staff level, um, have identified some of the problems that, that need to be addressed and there's, um, the outline I'll leave and you can obtain a copy of it. Uh, I think it's a, it's a really good first start.
Okay.
Really good fresh start. But there has to be the political will to do this as well, as we all, we all know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Would love to do it on the 22nd, Wednesday, the 22nd. My conflict is I'll be on a flight from England back to the United States.
Yeah, no problem.
How about Wednesday, the 22nd?
If you can't take the Concorde to get here.
The Concorde no longer flies, Scott.
All right.
And if it did, it wouldn't fly to Orlando.
Yeah, and I changed what I had on one date to go for the, the Tuesday, so I'm going to have to check if you changed that one again.
All right, is the 24th better for everybody?
Uh, let's see.
Oh, that's a Friday.
Okay.
It has to be before the 21st.
I'm sorry? It has to be before the 21st. So, um, all right, well, we have, uh, two more meetings before May, so, uh, we can do this administratively. If, uh, you can get a date potentially that works for our clerk and you and everybody else in May that complies with the statutory thing, we can circle back to this in, uh, at the March meeting.
I'll ask, uh, I'll ask our town clerk, who's much more qualified to handle this, uh, this juggling, uh, she'll coordinate the dates and we'll see what we can do administratively and get with everyone and
All right.
Be prepared at the March meeting to have a conclusion and a vote.
Terrific, all right, great. Again, real world, we just all talk about this if we could, but we can't. So thank you for, for accommodating that. So we'll move on to any other council member items? So we'll move on to any other council member items? Okay, we will now move on to item eight, which is discussion of possible or probable action. We have nothing under that, and I think that's still the same since we have an approved agenda. Item 9A, staff updates, building official report statistics. Mr. Held is out in the field, I understand.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the Building Department today and staff are doing joint training with the Indian River County Building Department. So they, that was something we couldn't change because it was joint training. If there are any questions on the reports, just please let me know. And if I can't answer them, I'll get an answer for you from our building official.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the Building Department report. If you look at the fees collected fiscal year to date, we're running $179,000 approximately versus the same period last year. I know we moved the fees up previously. Can you refresh my memory as what is the state requirement? We look at a trailing four years' worth of fees and we can't have our reserve be above that?
We look at the last, we look at the current year and the last three years prior to that of the excess. So we cannot have an excess of the expenditures. You're right, I'm sorry, it is the expenditures.
Yeah.
So of the last four years on the average, we cannot exceed that.
So we are...
We're okay.
Were we getting close?
No.
Or we're not?
We had a loss last year, or it was close to a loss last year, so we are fine.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess that segues right into my report.
Yes, don't go anywhere. Item 9B.
Yes, you've received my financial report. I did note that we were in excess of the revenues and I did, I am monitoring it. I do not foresee us needing to make any adjustments to the rates this fiscal year. I will be talking more with the building official for the next upcoming year. We may have to decrease fees for next year. It's a balancing act. It's because with the new statute, you can't exceed. We don't, we don't, we want to be about 75%, and that's kind of our target goal. With the approval, moving on, with the approval of the actuarial studies from this, after this morning, I will be able to finish the financial statements, so we will be presenting that at either the March or the April meeting. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions for our town treasurer? Just one comment we need to be aware of, and I'm sure, you know, Pete and Jim will be helpful with this, the impact on town finances with some of the bills that are pending at the end of this legislative session. There may be some that will have not just unfunded mandates, but also there are some bills that may result in increased costs. So, I don't know where exactly the increase in liability limits is going. It looks to me like it's lost some steam, but if it does get going again, then, you know, we may see a fairly substantial increase in insurance costs. We may see some increases in insurance costs for other items, so we just need to be mindful of that as we enter into the budget season. Fortunately, because we have an early legislative session this year, not toward the end, we can have a couple of months to look at it, assess and absorb before we go into budget time, so.
I appreciate that. Jim's been keeping me up to date so that we can get the budget all together.
Yeah, and there's no good news in any of it, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 9C, the Public Safety Department's report.
Yes, Chief Stone, Deputy Chief Scharr in St. Augustine, the law enforcement portion of our Public Safety Department, has received the Law Enforcement Accreditation Association designation of Excelsior, which is a very high designation for the law enforcement accreditation. So they are at that meeting in St. Augustine to receive that very notable, you know, acknowledgement of the Excelsior for accreditation. Other than that, as always, if there's any questions, just please let me know. As you might have noted, the traffic obviously has ticked up. I don't want to jinx anything, I'm sure I will immediately with this statement. When we leave, there'll be a backup to hear. But as we get towards Easter, we'll see what the numbers continue to look like, but the road backups do not seem to be, at least at this stage, as egregious as they have been. Whether some of that's accounted for the changing in the timing of the light at Village Beach Market or not, unsure, but I'd make that note for what it is.
No, I think that the backups are getting like they were last year, and I was wondering about the light at the beach market, so maybe one of the officers can go down there at some point. But I do think it's bad.
Well, we'll monitor it again. Last year, we did send someone down to do timing of the light at different times of days and, you know, and when it happens, the, that's just a challenge. I mean, it's just a challenge. And the reality of it is, is one thing that we've pushed out and our public safety personnel push out is that at some point in time, there will simply be more cars on the road than the road is designed to easily handle. The only bright spot may be the resolution of the Beechland and A-1A intersection at some point in time in the season. But for what it's worth, that's it.
Yes, I think if we're going to do that, wait until they're done with this project because that construction seems to have exacerbated the backup, you know, a long way.
Yeah.
So you had really, you know, two and a half lanes down to two lanes for a month, a month and a half. And ironically, at the busiest time of season, they decide to do these projects. So we have lovely summer months to do it, so.
Yes, sir.
All good points. Item 9D, Public Works Department?
Yeah, I have Mr. Bryant in the field handling a complaint that we had, but I would note that he and Sergeant Mike Krantz have been great, being down on the beach, you know, getting all of our information for those things. We've been pretty fortunate with some of the cooperative work that we've gotten from FDOT lately. As I noted, last council meeting, the day after that, we did a survey and got the coordinates for each of the spots, went, met with DOT and went up and down our, you know, our pathways and our bikeway here to make sure that they were aware of all the issues and concerns that we had for their, you know, for their ongoing repair projects. And they're all along A-1A. It's a matter of, it's a matter of timing. They're working south of 17th Street on those sidewalks and, you know, all the way up to here. So that's where we are with that, sir.
Thank you. Here's a hat you don't have to wear, Jim. 9E, Code Enforcement Report, because Sergeant Mike Krantz is here.
Good morning. As you received the month report for February, I just have one update on item number two. It's to piggyback off of Mr. Harpering's slideshow. There were five dune crossovers that were deemed unsafe structurally, missing steps at the bottom, the braces missing. Out of those five, only one remains in violation after a written notice of violation was sent to the owners. So I'm pretty happy with that. Other than that, I have no other updates. Any questions?
Anything for Sergeant Mike Krantz? Nothing? Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10, Town Attorney Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'll be brief this morning. The main thing I wanted to update is to follow up on what Mayor said regarding the legislative agenda at our Capitol. Today, February 24th, is one of the last days for any bills to be made and reconsidered. Most importantly, the 27th, so next week on Tuesday, will be the last day for regularly scheduled committee meetings. So anything, any bill that still had a committee meeting requirement before getting to the formal floor for a full vote either by the House or the Senate, would be required to have a committee meeting finalized by next Tuesday. And the final date of session is March 8th. So we're in the home stretch. And again, Mayor, you referenced the sovereign immunity bill among several of them. That one is still pending, has at least two committee stops, one of which is scheduled for next week. So, as was mentioned, all of this will be fast and furious ending. They still have to finalize the budget. I already have in line with colleagues from Florida League of Cities, as well as the Florida Association of Counties, a full debrief that will be available probably by the end of April. So we have a little bit of trailing time to have a full comprehensive report on everything that was passed, as well as things that died. So primarily, that's where the focus has been, as well as with Mr. Harpering on all of the related things we've been talking about today. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So, I'm assuming Representative Brackett's utility bill is dead at this point?
I, you know, great question. We've talked about it and followed up. I, the only information I have is it's still been placed on hold in the committee that he's vice chair of. There is some hope that the other bill, which does have a Senate companion, may draft some of the, may engraft some of the legislation from 777 on to that. As Pete said, it's a fast and furious end to the session. I think the fact that, you know, the governor suspended his campaign for president and came back, kind of reorganized some of the legislative agenda, so they only have so much time to do things. But, you know, in speaking with our town attorney and other advisors on this, you know, many times this legislation is a, I hate to say shot across the bow, but a warning, so to speak, that, you know, this is the third year in a row that there's been, you know, a bill pending addressing the same issues with utilities and putting some parameters upon them short of, you know, Public Service Commission regulation and control. So, we'll keep pushing to make sure that, you know, we get everything that we think we need in terms of legislative relief. I was pretty pleased with the pending legislation as a first start. It got out of committee, what, 13, 13-2 or 12-3?
Right.
Something like that. So, I think there's the, I think there's the legislative will to do it, but whether there's the timing to do it, you know, maybe, you know, what did they say for our former Dodgers that used to be here, there's always next year?
Yes.
If not this year, we'll circle back next year. But, you know, I think, I think the recognition in the bill that I hope still passes, that there have to be some limits put on how much can be transferred from a utility fund to a general fund, is a really good first start, so.
Yeah, if I could just say, for those who don't have inside baseball on this, that might be watching on YouTube, Representative Robbie Brackett had put a bill in that had a number of provisions, one of which was that if a municipal utility had customers both inside its own city that owned the utility and had customers outside the city, that they had to be charged the same rates. Right now, there can be premiums placed on it, and there are certain cities like Tallahassee that can do it. And what I always say to people who are against it, think about a situation where if you were getting electricity from Florida Power and Light and you were, your neighbor who happened to live across a invisible city boundary a block away, who was paying, you know, $10 a megawatt hour, and you, just because you happened to live in a, in a different town, two blocks away, was charged in $12 an hour, how would you like that? I don't think you would. Well, right now, places like the city of Vera Beach can potentially do that. So, just so people understand what we're talking about, so.
Yeah, good point. And also, the bill requires at least every seven years a rate study be done, so that you can't do what the city did, which is not raise rates for over a decade, I believe, and then use, you know, potentially use, you know, premiums tacked on to people outside the jurisdiction to kind of balance the books.
Right.
Well, more than balance the books, generate increased revenue to then put over to the general fund. So, we've worked very hard to persuade members of the legislature that this is the right thing to do, but we'll, we'll keep plugging away. All right, item 11, Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Land Development Code Review Phase Two is ongoing. Just to give you a brief update on the schedule, I know I've provided you with some information on it and we're talking about it individually. We anticipate having an open house similar to the one for Phase One on March 12th. That's the same day as the Planning, Zoning and Variance Board meeting. We don't know if there'll be anything calendared on that day for PZV, but we'll have the open house on that day nonetheless. Subsequent to the open house, we'll address whatever issues, problems or concerns or items that council desires, and we'll schedule this for a first reading in the April Town Council meeting. I would like to note that I have provided copies of everything that the council has received to the Planning, Zoning and Variance Board members, and I've offered the opportunity to meet with them individually to discuss anything they'd like on the Phase Two review. So that's where we are with that. Hopefully, by May, we'll have second reading and we can turn on to some reviews of some other areas of the ordinance that are due. Also, I'd like to note that the procurement process for the solid waste and recyclable bull collection process is ongoing. Just yesterday, we had the opening of the bids that were received. And much to our pleasure, I would note that there were five companies that put in bids for the procurement that, and those are Republic Services, FCC Environmental Services of Florida, Waste Management, Waste Pro, and Coastal Waste and Recycling. Our deputy town manager and finance director, Heather Christmas, will be sitting on the review committee for those. I will have a role in the negotiating committee part of it. And I would just like to note, sort of amplify what a great job Homachi Maida and the purchasing department and the team at the county did on this procurement. It was a very large piece, very unwieldy to manage. They had issued 10 addendums with answers to over 170 questions. So the process itself is in a great position now, and we just have the timeframes for the meetings and ultimately discussion and recommendation with the B.O.C.C. and this body. So as we go along, I'll keep you updated. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything for our town manager? No? Just thank you for the binder with the updates to the Land Development Code. Again, this is not one of those glamorous projects that everybody stands up and cheers for, but it's long overdue. And I think it'll result in a more readable product for our town council. I would love to see the face on municide when they get all of the revisions, when they have to revamp them, but it is, for those of us who have gone through and tried to figure out, is there an ordinance or some kind of rule of regulation on this? You've got to go hunting around from different sections, and I think, I think it's terrific. And I also think that, you know, what we've, what we've found is that, you know, by and large, you know, we have, we've done a pretty good job historically in the town for making our ordinances match the character, nature and aesthetic of the community. So, it's always a good self-awareness check. It's always good to, you know, to see whether or not you're just deluding yourself into thinking things are good, as opposed to thinking what alternatives there are out there and seeing that there really aren't any. And we're not, we're not that, you know, we're not that inconsistent with communities of a similar nature and quality to us. So, my belief is that, you know, these kinds of codifications are important to keeping our community the way it is. And it's not, it's not enough just to have one HOA that has, you know, a terrific set of rules, and then next door you have cars on blocks and, not to disparage anybody who works on their own cars still, but there's a certain, certain quality to our community that I think extends beyond just individual HOAs. So, thank you very much for all the hard work that's going into that. All right, item 12, Council Committee Reports and Non-Action Items. We can start from right to left. Councilmember Smith?
The Beach and Shores meeting was pushed back. It should have been last Monday, but it's not till this coming Monday, so I don't have anything to report from that, other than the, so far, we're waiting for the Army Corps to let us exact, to know exactly what kind of archaeological survey we have to do for those items on the beach. They don't think it'll be a full-blown survey, which is good news. So we just, as soon as we get that, but we still need that before they're going to proceed on the dune restorations. But they're working on it. And I'll know more Monday.
Great, thank you. And thank you for your work on that issue. Councilmember Altieri? I will defer most of the items that I've already touched upon are the same kind of legislative items and topics that were handled by my committees, TCC, LG and Regional League of Cities, so I'll pass it to Vice Mayor Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Economic Development Council meeting on January the 30th. The main item on the agenda was a, involved a new company, a new business in Sebastian called Project MOD. And Project MOD, the owners of the company have applied for tax abatement, submitted their tax abatement. their tax abatement application. Project MOD is a, I think it's a fascinating case study. There, it's a, it's a new company formed in August of last year. They manufacture steel-enforced ready-made modular units that are used primarily as components in the construction of affordable multifamily housing units. The company has invested $4 million to retrofit an existing building in Sebastian, and they anticipate hiring 24 new employees, annual salaries ranging from $55,000 to $100,000. And based on the positive economic impact generated by this new business, the, the committee, the council unanimously approved granting the company an eight-year tax abatement. Based on the, my limited history with the Economic Development Council, this is the first meeting that I recall attending where such an application came before the council. And I was extraordinarily impressed with the thorough analysis done by the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce in, with regard to fielding the application and doing the economic impact analysis that they did. And so hopefully, it's a sign of more new businesses to come in Indian River County. I'll leave the material. You might want to take a look at it with, with Janice. And secondly, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. Tom Lanahan, who is the executive director, well-known to Councilman Alwater, invited me to a one-on-one orientation in Stewart on February the 1st. It was an hour well-spent, certainly on, on my part. My inaugural meeting, the council, was last Friday, the 16th in Stewart. There were a few perfunctory items on the, the agenda for that meeting, followed by an extraordinarily thorough review and description of the council's work program and an excellent presentation by a noted architect from West Palm Beach describing the planning principles for civic public buildings and the placement, their placement and priority. The meeting was really more educational in nature, no specific items were approved. Next meeting is March 15th in West Palm Beach, and that will be a joint meeting between the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council and the South Florida Regional Planning Council.
Great, thank you. Councilman Alwater?
There was a meeting of the Metro Palm Planning Organization, which is a transportation, planning, decision-making body for Indian River County. They, they went through all the projects and the priority list really hasn't changed from the previous year. One thing, though, of interest that was discussed as a separate item was the revamp, reconstruction expansion of Route 510 from A-1A all the way up to 512. Specifically, what was discussed is the first section of the project, which is going to essentially be from just east of the 711 gas station in the intersection of Route 1 and 510 to just west of the Florida East Coast slash Brightline train tracks. And what they decided upon, well, let me step back. One of the items that was under consideration was to do an actual overpass that would go over US-1 and would go over railroad tracks and land west. And based on the scoring system, and I think a lot of it revolved around cost, they decided not to do that and have a more traditional intersection. So that's just something I want to make aware of. It will speed things through there, but until the entire project is done all the way out to 5, 512, it's going to take some time. Ultimately, what they're going to do on 510, which will be taken over by the state, it's currently a county, our route, it'll be taken over by the state, which will, at the margin, give us a little bit of a break on taxpayer expenditures here, is they will have two lanes in each direction. They will have on either side, they will have a, both east and west, they'll have a seven-foot, what they call a buffered bike lane. It won't be separated, but it'll give you a little more space. And then they will also have a shared use path, similar to what we have here at the town along the west side of A-1A. It will be on the north side of 510, but it'll be, my understanding, it'll be a fair amount wider than what we have here. It'll be a really nice project they've done. And then what they will also do at 66th Avenue there, just west of Wabash, so they will have a roundabout. And I think what the advantage of that will be, particularly if we're in a situation where there's an evacuation from a hurricane, you won't have to worry about lights being out and things like that, it'll keep the traffic flowing. And there's been study after study done, which have shown that on a high-volume intersection like that one is, a roundabout is much safer than having a situation where you have a light. The speeds are slower. If there is an accident, it's going to be less damaging. So it'll be a good project when it gets done, but I think we're looking at five, six years overall. So that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to call to the audience. Are there any members of the audience that would like to have a comment, make a statement? None? Okay, there being none, we are going to adjourn. And with the adjournment, we're going to take a, what does everybody need, five minutes? 10 minutes?
Mr. Mayor, if we could just, if we could, if we could have 10 just for our setup and to move everything around for the meeting, we appreciate it.
All right, so we will reconvene at 10:28 and 8 seconds. We, we need to make sure that the room is secure because this is a shade meeting, so we need to make sure that we're also not streaming live. And although I'm sure members of the public would be interested in this topic, because of the nature of it, it's, it's exempted from the public record. Yeah, exactly. So we will all reconvene about 10:00.